Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. Please join Commissioner Ruiz as he leads us in our flag salute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you guys would please stand and place your right hand over your heart and repeat with me. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz. Could I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Hagel.
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Vice Chair Turley Trejo. Chairman Watts.
Here.
And we have one absence from Commissioner Telesio.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments tonight?
We have none.
Very well. We will skip to the consent calendar. There's only one item on the consent calendar, the minutes from our last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hagel, seconded by Commissioner Ruiz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four aye votes. Moving right along, we're going to open our public hearing. Won't open it yet, but we're going to have a public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the project at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the project in court, you may be limited raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to the Planning Commission at temecula.ca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the Council Policy Regarding Public Participation at Meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Item number two tonight on our agenda is Planning Application Number PA 20-1371, a development plan for 349-unit apartment community built on 15.1 acres located at the terminus of Date Street, approximately 900 feet south of Yonex Road. Could we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson, Planning Commissioners. As you stated, this is Planning Application PA 20-1371, which is the Solana Winchester Project. So also, as you stated, it is a development plan to allow for the construction of a 349-unit multifamily residential community. A little bit of background, on December 1st of 2020, the Second Amendment to the Harvest and Specific Plan was approved by the City of Temecula City Council. As part of that specific plan amendment, a residential overlay was established which allows for the development of up to 1,000 units. So we have the Heirloom Farms Project, which is 321 units, which is under construction. We have the Prado Project, which you approved last month, which is 237 units. And before you tonight is Solana Winchester, which is 349 units. So that totals 907 units. So with the simple math, that's 93 units that are left to be built in the residential overlay. So this shows the residential overlay zone of Planning Area 12 of Harveston, and the red shows the project. So just to the north, you have the empty lot, and then you have Audi, and then to the north of that, you have Mercedes. And then it's a little bit better where exactly where the project is. As you said, it is located at the terminus of Date Street, approximately 900 feet south of Yonex Road. Some analysis, it is located in the Harvest and Specific Plan Residential Overlay of Planning Area 12, 15.1 acres, 349 multifamily units. There's 21 studio units, which are 573 square feet, 122 one-bedroom units, which are 672 to 710 square feet, 172 bedroom units, 1,016 to 1,101 square feet, 27 three-bedroom units, 1,301 to 1,332 square feet, and finally, nine townhomes, which are 1,755 square feet. So amenities within the project, as we've stated before on other projects at Harveston, residents of this project are not permitted to use the Harveston Recreation Area. So they do have a private clubhouse, which is just for the residents of the Solana Winchester Project. Within that clubhouse, they have a fitness facility, pickleball, a dog wash, and a golf simulator. Of course, there's a pool and spa area, has an outdoor kitchen, fireplace, and commandas, totlot, a dog park, and then additional barbecue and seating areas. For parking, they are required to provide 645 parking spaces, 385 of those required to be covered, and 260 uncovered. They are providing that exact amount, with 645, 385 covered, and 260 uncovered. Walk through the site plan. We have two entrances to the project, so you have two full movement ingress and egress points. We have the clubhouse area, the dog park, and some courtyards. To blow up those amenities a little bit more, you have the clubhouse area, which is an 11,245-square-foot building, has the pool, spa, barbecue area, bike racks, and the totlot. The dog park, which has the double-gated entry, a dog water station, and it's a decomposed granite, is for the play area. And then the private courtyard areas, you have gated entry into those areas, shade trees, seating areas, and barbecue area. For architecture, the applicant has gone with a Spanish colonial architectural style, and within that style, they have some estile roofs, decorative ironwork, square tower elements, arched doorways, windows, or arcades, and appropriate colors and materials. And the large mass of the buildings are broken up using building articulation, mixture of finished materials and color, and the use of tower elements to avoid the appearance of a big box structure. So we'll walk through some of the elevations. So we have the site plan on the bottom. So this would be the view of the main building along Temecula Center Drive. And then as you get closer to Date Street, still on Temecula Center Drive, and then as you're on Date Street, once the extension comes in, and then finally, if you're on the future I-15 interchange. And then we also do have some renderings of the project. So these are views, again, from Temecula Center Drive, if you're passing in front of the project. And then the view from Date Street, and the view from the future off-ramp. And then, of course, we have the private recreation area, the view from the Temecula Center Drive, and then internal view from the pool area. In terms of landscaping, there is no minimum landscaping coverage percentage required in the residential overlay. However, the landscape is provided within the LDZs of Date Street and Temecula Center Drive, and the recreational areas, and then along the frontages of the garages. Some of those plant types do include the crepe myrtle, the coast live oak, Idaho locust, purple leaf plum, and red yucca. So these next images here show Date Street and Temecula Center Drive, and then highlighting those landscape development zones. So this is very consistent with both Prado and Heirloom Farms in terms of the landscape development zones. And then, just so you can see, some of the actual plantings, the crepe myrtle, Idaho locust, and the red yucca. Moving on to the community-wide extraordinary public benefit, you've heard me talk about this on the other two projects. So on March 21st of 2000, the city council adopted the Growth Management Action Plan, or the GMP. The GMP applies when projects involve land use changes, including general plan amendments and specific plan amendments. The previously approved specific plan amendment for Harveston requires that all future residential projects in the overlay to provide community-wide benefits. The community-wide public benefit for the project as determined by the city council ad hoc Winchester Hills Subcommittee is a $750,000 payment to the city. That payment will be used by the City of Temecula for citywide projects that benefit the community as a whole. Moving on to the fiscal impact analysis, so the city's fiscal policies require that a fiscal impact analysis, or FIA, be completed for any development that proposes an increase in residential density from what is currently allowed in the general plan. The previously approved general plan amendment changed the land use from a service commercial land use to specific plan implementation, which allows for residential development, which obviously increases residential density. So when that happened, it was unknown at that time, the size of residential projects, or if we'd have residential projects that would be proposed, so it was not possible to prepare an FIA without a project to analyze. So the Harveston Specific Plan, as amended, requires that any residential project within the residential overlay prepare an FIA. And the FIA did evaluate the reoccurring general fund revenues and expenditures generated by the project by estimating the fiscal impact on the general fund resulting from the development of the project over a 20-year time period. So the FIA did find that the project would result in a city services deficit, and the FIA will be used in the creation of a funding mechanism to pay the city as a mitigation for the city services deficit. We do have one COA revision, and that'll be revised, COA number 118 will be revised, so we're just adding the beginning part of it. So prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy, then the rest of it was already there. The developer shall complete all work per the approved plans and conditions of approval to the satisfaction of the city engineer. This includes all onsite work, including water quality facilities, public improvements, and the executed WQNP operation and maintenance agreement. We do have one COA addition, and the condition of approval hasn't been added to read for the reimbursement agreement. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the reimbursement agreement for the construction of street improvements on Temecula Center Drive along Assessor Parcel 916-400-061 shall be executed. Terms of environmental determination for this project, there is no environmental further review. It is for Section 15162, which is for the subsequent EIRs and declaration, as well as 15182, which is projects pursuant to the specific plan, which would be the Harveston Specific Plan. So the project is consistent with the previously adopted Harveston Subsequent Environmental Impact Report and Harveston Specific Plan. So with that, staff does recommend the Planning Commission approve PA 20-1371, subject to the conditions of approval, including the one revision and the one addition. So that concludes staff's report. I am here for questions. The project owner slash applicant is here, and our fiscal consultant is here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Appreciate that. Before I open the public hearing, and we hear from the applicant, questions of staff from the commissioners.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a question, I didn't notice in there, and I honestly don't know if there's any kind of requirements for EV charging stations when going in a multifamily, or solar, or any of that kind of stuff. I know single families got some requirements. Is there any specific requirements for multifamily?
Yeah, they have to meet the updated California Building Code, and so while it's not required, they have to be plumbed for them for in the future, currently.
So of all of the designated parking there?
A certain percentage of them that meets the building code.
Okay.
So that may change in the future, but this project would be subject to what's currently right now.
Okay, so even though they're not shown there, they're plumbed, minimum going to be plumbed for?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Well, the first thing is, thank you for the material board. Always love that, so I appreciate that. So on the Temecula Center Drive, so obviously that's going to go all the way through, it's not there yet, correct?
It will go all the way through when that next project comes in, so...
When this, if this project is approved.
We can defer to Ron Moreno with Public Works.
So Heirloom Farms is conditioned to do their frontage for Temecula Center Drive, so that's taking it past the Audi parcel, which currently ends in a cul-de-sac. They're going to be doing their half, half of the street plus 12. In other words, getting a lane so that we can have two-way traffic. But the timing of it is going to depend also on this development, because as Solana Winchester comes in, they will be completing their frontage improvement, so we could have this going at the same time, including the fact that in one of those conditions that Scott read off, we've asked this development, Solana Winchester, to complete the improvements in front of the vacant Audi parcel, and they're going to be entering into that reimbursement agreement with that parcel in order to get paid back their costs in the future. What that does for them is it completes Temecula Center Drive all the way to Date Street, and that way, we have a complete street that then we, as the city, can accept. And so therefore, they wouldn't be on the hook for any maintenance in the future, we would take that over. So that's the reason for that. So Temecula Center Drive will currently end at Date Street. Of course, we'll have traffic going, making lefts out of there and going back to Yonex, but we won't be able to complete those median improvements until the future third phase of the interchange, the French Valley interchange, comes in. Does that answer it for you?
Yeah, I think so. It does. I think that's all I have for staff. Thank you.
Okay. I assume this is not a gated community? Is that correct?
It is not.
Okay. What is the width of Temecula Center Drive?
Oh, I knew you were going to ask that question. That is classified as a collector road, and I believe the width is 60 feet, curb-to-curb?
60.
Yeah, but I think we're looking for that right now.
Okay. 60, would that allow for parking along it?
Currently, yes, because there was already parking going on on Temecula Center Drive with the Mercedes dealership.
It's 56.
56.
56.
56, curb-to-curb.
The nine townhomes, would they have garages?
Yes.
Is that included in the parking space count?
Correct.
It is? Okay. That's all I have for now.
Okay, that's it for staff. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
I have received none. Did anyone want to forward?
Go ahead, sir, step up and hand the card to her, Denise.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Appreciate you guys letting me come in here. This is my first time coming in here.
Welcome.
My name is Joshua Blecky. I'm a resident here at Temecula, California. I just make it clear, I work for Southwest Region of the Carpenters, but my big thing today is environmental. Some of the things is, these plans and the companies that they're going to try to build here are not local. There's been tons of studies, some by EPA, which I'll get into in a second, that show the impact of not hiring local laborers is horrible for the environment. Another thing, too, you know, look at it as, we're keeping the money in our town, right? We hire local, that money stays local. You know, take myself for an example, I live right here in Temecula. If I have to work here in Temecula, where's my money going to go? Where's my lunch going to go? You know, where am I going to get gas? Type of deal, you know? And there's tons of people, you know, that work here that can easily do this job. But to get into some of the finer details, let me blow this up. There's been, in 2020, the state did a big project called Putting California on the High Road, and this was done by the California Workfront and Development Board, and that goes into where I'm getting a lot of my information from, saying that it is a whole lot better for the environment to hire local, to stay local, less people on the roads, you know, and it goes very deep into that, and I'm going to let that speak for itself, because that's where I'm getting all my information from, and that's right by the state. There's also, just in the last year, the South Coast Air Quality Management District Foundation has put up the exact same results, showing that hiring local, not bringing in people from out of the area, everything, as possible being bought local, once again, is just better for the environment. There's been a couple cities that already adopted this right into their plan. The most recent one was in Northern California, was Hayward, and just to try to get up with the, what the state's trying to push for, is trying to put in for everything, you know, all their new builds to be local if possible, local builds, local equipment, coming out of local areas, not just help the economy, but to help out the environment. Local trades and skills are massive in this area. We want them to keep going to other areas, do the same job and spending money in the other areas, you know? And the big thing, too, is, I think with some of the changes, especially being so close to the highway and having the environmental facts, I mean, that the EIR didn't, you know, that wasn't part of that initial plan, and we could go deep into that if we really want, but that's not really my big concern, but I'm still bringing it up, because working right next to the highway, right next to the 15, and being so busy, what impact is that going to be for the people that live in this community? So that's one thing that I don't think got addressed, and I would like to see get addressed. Other than that, I appreciate your time. Thank you for letting me come up here, and have a good, good evening.
Thank you, Joshua. Any other speakers? Okay, we...
Unless you want the applicant to...
Yeah. The commission would like to hear from the applicant. We like to hear, even if we don't have any questions, we want to hear from you, so welcome, welcome.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairperson, members of the commission, I'm Derek Ampe. I am representing the applicant, that is, the Rayland Properties and Kitchell Development Company Partnership. We have been working on this project to bring it forward to you for about two and a half years, and we're finally ready to present it to you. Staff's done a great job over the last year, coaching us and encouraging us, guiding us through the process of honing our project into the most high-quality project we can bring forward. So that you'll know a little bit about us, we're a Western United States multifamily builder. We build this Class A multifamily product around the West. We've built probably about $2 billion worth of these kind of communities, and we niche our product on the highest end of the existing community that we go into. So we create new benchmarks for communities wherever we go, of quality and product type. This particular proposal is mirrored after another community that we built in Colorado that won the National Multifamily of the Year Award for garden-style properties, and we're very proud of that. It has been tremendously successful. It was built in a redevelopment agency area of that city of Arvada, and they have put it up on their own websites as the benchmark, you want to come and build in our community, come and do this, and you are welcome. So we're very grateful to be able to bring that kind of a project forward. We love Temecula. I raised my family here, only moved away a couple of years ago just to get closer to my work, and I love Temecula. Love coming back over the hill and coming home every night when I drive into town, so we have a lot of vested interest in the quality that we'll bring here. We've reviewed our conditions of approval. We're happy to answer any questions that you have of us.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions of Mr. Campe?
Yeah, thank you. These are intended as rental units, correct?
Yes.
Do you know, just out of curiosity, what the range of rents?
Yes. We target a wide variety of housing types within our communities. We start with an efficiency unit for workforce-type housing. We go into couples, singles, empty nesters, some seniors. They're all targeted against very specific community aspects and members, and so we end up with a project that has a lot of different, draw to different places. We also have, you know, some that are built as roommate units, you know, two singles in a unit. Those segments start at, you know, like was quoted to you, an efficiency unit, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, all in flats, and then we have some bookend townhomes that are three-story, two-car attached garage units on some of the buildings. So it'll run that whole gamut. Our rents, again, we're two years away from leasing a unit. You know, they're probably going to start at about $1,995 and run to about $3,500.
Thank you.
Yes, Linay.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome. Yeah, so I'm a pickleball person, and saw that there's pickleball courts, but I think Scott said it was inside the recreation center?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah, we're like you, we see the pickleball craze, too.
Yeah, so I don't know how it's set up in the recreation center, but I just know if you could do two courts, that's going to be your best bet, because it's going to be popular. So that was one thing, one thing, just a suggestion. The other question I have, and I don't know if you can answer it, but I was looking at the table of annual recurring expenditures. Do you have somebody on your staff that can answer that?
In the FIA?
Yeah, it's actually...
Yes, the city's consultant can assist with that.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, it's actually on page 44 is my question. So on the annual general fund expenditures...
Will you have you step up, please?
Yep.
We'll need your name for the record, too.
Yes, hi. Good evening, Chair Watson, Vice Chair Turley Trejo. Paul Mara with Kaiser Marston Associates. We prepared the fiscal impact report for the city.
Okay, awesome. So yeah, I just, my question was on page 44, on the annual general fund expenditure, on if you can just explain to me, like for 2023, where those numbers come from, you know, right across the board, like, you know, city council, I don't know, city clerk, city attorney? Yeah.
Happy to. So the way we prepare these studies, we start with the city's general fund budget. We use fiscal year '21 revised general fund budget. We break it out into those various categories of municipal services or city departments that you see there, and then we divide the existing annual total city expenditure in that category by a population base, a citywide population base, and that gives us a metric, a sort of per capita figure, and then we apply that figure to the anticipated population of the development. In that first year, 2023, the project's not fully absorbed, so the first stabilized year, I believe, is year two, 2024, in that projection. So what you're seeing there is multiplying out those per capita figures escalated forward based on the population that's in place at that time.
Okay, so for example, just so, so you look at the city clerk line, and you go, and it says 5,213 for 2024, and you come up with that number. So what does that exactly mean, I guess? It's my question.
Well, the concept in a fiscal impact study is that as the city grows, there's pressure on city hall, city operations, city municipal services, and it's not all one-for-one. So for example, the city manager's office doesn't necessarily grow exactly proportionate to the increase in population.
Right.
By the time the city doubles in size, you don't actually double the size of the city manager's office, so we actually do a marginal cost adjustment for that. But each new development is triggering an increase in demand on city services. Those types of functions, like city clerk, finance department, city manager, city council, those, we do not put a one-to-one impact. Each new housing development and each new set of population doesn't trigger that exponential increase in city operations. But for example, police, we absolutely do one-to-one impact, because you have a stated goal of one officer per thousand population, so we don't make any adjustment. We know what it costs, fully burdened for one officer, and we take this population, how does it compare to 1,000 people, and multiply that out.
So that, so that actual number is the impact on that particular area with having this...
These new residents?
Right.
Triggering demand for city services?
Okay.
I know it seems a little... I know it seems a little esoteric to say there's an impact on the city clerk office, but as the city grows, more people interact with the city clerk's office. It's easier if you look at community services...
Yeah, it's just interesting. I hadn't ever seen a table like that, and so I was just wanting to understand it, so...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, sure.
That's what I wanted, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions of the fiscal analysis before we ask Mr. Ampe to come back up? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Split it that way, but it worked out, so. Ampe, okay, sorry.
Yes, so pickleball is emerging as a great sport. What we chose to do is, in kind of a land-constrained environment, we were building a clubhouse that wanted to be over the top, and so we built in a combination, multipurpose indoor recreational facility attached to the club, and it can serve as basketball, pickleball, and any number of types of fitness programs that you could do in there. It's designed so that it'll serve the residents of the property and be able to be exclusive to their use, but we decided to make it indoor, which is much more costly than making an outdoor one, and we think that's going to really meet the needs of the residents that are going to be interested in that here in the property.
My concern is not so much with this particular project, but a concern in general, which is parking. My experience has been that going into pretty much any apartment complex in Southern California or townhouses or whatever, on a Saturday or Sunday to visit my son or whoever it might be, that there's almost never any parking and end up very frustrated, because you might have to drive a half mile or a mile to go find parking. My question's regarding Temecula Center Drive. I think in this case may relieve some of that if there is parking along there. It's not, it's a reasonable walk to go outside of this to be able to park, should there not be enough parking. From what I can see is I calculated 1.85 parking spaces per unit. Is there a measurement that we use, or a minimum, or a standard that we use?
Yeah, so in the specific plan, when we did the residential overlay, we added in a section specifically for multifamily parking, and it's not based per unit, it's based on the bedrooms per unit. So if you have a one-bedroom unit, you're required to have less parking spaces than a three-bedroom unit. So it all, so that's where they showed like the 1.85 or whatever it is on the plans. That's more for their calculations, it's not necessarily our calculations. We go off the specific plan, which the specific plan is actually, requires more parking than the development code. We set it up that way. Originally, when we were working with a developer three years ago, they actually came in lower than development code, and that wasn't going to be acceptable for the exact reasons you're saying. We know we have apartment complexes or condo complexes in the city where it's an absolute mess, and they're parking in neighborhoods across the street, and so we said you either had to be at least at or above what the development code was at that time.
Okay. I think when, I don't know if we got lucky or it was planned this way, but with Temecula Center Drive, that, you know, acts as kind of a relief for the pressure, and if future projects have the opportunity to have something like that, I think it's a big benefit to the project, particularly maybe not renting for the first time, but renting later on when, you know, the word is out, and either people feel good about it or they don't feel good about it, but I think it's, you know, it's something that could be very good for the project if people feel good about it, and hopefully there's ways that we can accommodate that.
Yeah, our bigger problems fall in when we have, like, townhomes that would be considered a single-family home, when all your only requirement is for two enclosed spaces.
Right.
And so then they'll develop this larger development, but there's not really on-street guest parking. Those are our bigger problems in the city. It's not necessarily with the multifamily rental communities because of those escalators for the unit, for the bedrooms.
Yeah. By the way, I don't, you know, Date Street might accommodate parking as well. I wouldn't necessarily rely upon that. It's going to be a busy road, and I don't know if I'd want to park out there, particularly if I had little kids. So anyway, that's, that was my big concern, and, you know, for the future, anyway.
Okay, any other questions, the applicant? And I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, Mr. Ampe. Thank you very much. Okay, any other speakers?
None.
I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and before we have any discussion, one of the speakers mentioned the environmental constraints on the project, and I know you covered that in your presentation, Scott, but if you could just real quickly go back over that and explain the sequo application to this project, if you will, please.
We'll have Scott start, and then I'll take over on the local hire mandate issue.
Very good.
So back when we did the Harvest in Specific Plan Amendment slash General Plan Amendment, it did, we did a subsequent EIR. It went out for public review from January 31 of 2020 to March 16 of 2020. It was approved at the Planning Commission on November 9 of 2020, and then ultimately at the City Council on December 1 of 2020. And that analysis took into account for 1,000 units, including on the freeway, anywhere in the residential overlay, and that included things like noise impacts on specifically this project of any, well, not this project, we didn't know it was going to be this project, but any residential units along the freeway. So there was additional studies that were performed, should residential units be located on that freeway side. And then I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
So typically, courts have found that local hire mandates run afoul of both the California and United States Constitution. There have been a number of court challenges that have successfully challenged these type of mandates as violating either the right to travel, privileges and immunities, or equal protection, with the idea that imposing a mandate that someone be a resident within an area for either what's called a durational residency requirement for a certain period of time, or that you have to stay there, you know, live there in order to obtain a job, doesn't allow people to travel and move about, which is, has been found to be unconstitutional. So that's generally not permitted by the courts. Local preferences have sometimes, you know, there's, there may be a little bit more wiggle room, but a straight local mandate would not be recommended.
Thank you for clarifying that, we appreciate it. Okay, discussion and the motion is, or there's an item before us, so I'll start it this time.
I apologize for jumping the gun, I forgot the public hearing was still open, so...
That's okay.
But I will like to approve the recommendations.
Okay, so you're making the motion with the conditions of approval as...
With the condition of approval, yes.
So just to clarify, that's a motion to approve the development with the revisions to condition of approval number 118, as well as the addition of the new condition of approval pertaining to the reimbursement agreement?
Correct, yeah.
Yes, so that's the motion? Good.
I'll second it.
And it has been seconded. Did we want to discuss it before I call for the vote? Just any comments?
Um...
We can do it afterwards.
Well, just on that clarification, Maricela, so what, tell me again what the, I just seconded it, but, tell me again what I seconded.
Sure. Staff had presented two conditions of approval that were changing. Number 118, and if we can pull it back up, Scott, perhaps that would be easiest, added some language in terms of, like, when the condition went into effect, so it was like building, is it being pulled up? Oh, there it is. So prior to the issue until the first certificate of occupancy, that's the requirement, so that's the added language. And then there was an additional condition of approval with respect to needing to enter into a reimbursement agreement, and that was the discussion that...
The Temecula Center Drive.
Yes, correct.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to be clear on what I seconded, like, after I seconded it. That's awesome. Okay, thank you.
And before I call for the voting, very good. Okay, the motion has been made by Commissioner Hegel, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Turley Trejo. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's a four to zero vote. Congratulations, good luck, and we're glad to have you on board. So 349 additional housing units for the city, and we need every unit we can get, so thank you very much. Alrighty then, we're moving on to commissioner reports. I'll just start over here with Commissioner Hegel, do you have a report?
Nothing, no.
Okay. Commissioner Turley Trejo.
No commissioner report.
And Commissioner Ruiz.
No report, but just a question, maybe of staff or here, if there's some direction, not any project in particular, but with all the development that's going on, obviously just here in Temecula specifically, one of the questions that always gets asked of me is, are you guys looking at infrastructure, you're looking at water, you're looking at that kind of stuff? And I'm sure it is as part of the process going through, but I don't have any more information than that. So I don't know if there's a potential for, you know, maybe a future presentation or included with some of the, you know, applications moving forward, if that could be addressed a little bit, because it is a pretty hot topic right now, and one that's commonly asked.
I think I can address one part of your concern. I've already had discussions with Mr. Watson about the water issue and how it's perceived by the public, in that it would behoove us to have someone come in and explain how that works and how the whole process is. So I'm, he has indicated that he will ask Rancho California Water to come in and give us a briefing on that. So that'll address hopefully that part of it, and I don't know about the other parts, but...
Yeah, just in general, anytime a project comes in, it gets routed to all the utility agencies, and we ask for, you know, they can comment anytime from them all the way up until the public hearing. So we get will-serv letters saying that, you know, EMWD, RCWD, sometimes it's an MWD, we will, we have the capacity to serve this project. So that's something we usually will not move forward on a project until we receive those letters.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I assume the background had all been done, but I think a presentation here would definitely go a long way, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm getting more and more concerns about, you know, the conflicting messages that we're getting from Sacramento, from leadership versus our duty to do what we're supposed to do here in the Planning Commission. So we're going to ask for more information, they'll give us a little solid foundation, at least for the public to know these things. So good point.
Look forward to that, thank you very much.
We struggle with that ourselves sometimes, because we are dealing with the issue of the water crisis, but at the same time, we have mandates put on us for the amount of housing that needs to be built. There are a lot of conflicts between state requirements and the state's own agencies, such as fish and wildlife. So there are a lot of different agencies that we deal with that have input into this process, and a lot of it's handled through environmental review, but also our general plan, which we're going through a major update on currently. That's going to be a couple of two, three years before that's completed, but that's a process that's begun and ongoing, and that you're going to see pieces and components of as that process moves forward. So you'll be hearing more about various aspects of this in the coming years.
No, and again, I appreciate it. I just think, you know, part of our role is answering those community questions and, you know, trusting, I mean, we know staff is going through it, and it's going through the right processes before it comes here, but having a little bit more, you know, knowledge, information, background, presentation that can be shared or something like that, I think really would go a long way, so look forward to that.
Totally agree, and I expect that we'll be doing a great service to the public, who may not be aware of some of the things that were just outlined by staff over there. So that will be something we hopefully will look forward to pretty soon. Okay, commission subcommittee reports. I don't remember.
Okay, that would be me. All right, we just had a subcommittee report this afternoon regarding a new hotel that we both forgot the name of, which is pretty bad.
It's the Forense project.
Oh, but it doesn't really have a name.
Forense.
Oh, that is going to be Forense, okay, that's why I forgot it, I guess, okay. Anyway, so this particular hotel is between the Hampton Inn and the Hilton Garden, and it's the same ownership, same builders as Hilton Garden, correct? And it, what's different about it is it's going to be seven stories, so it's kind of our first in that, we haven't had one seven stories yet. It's been, I think, four, is four the highest we've had?
Correct, so the Alon Jefferson, the hotel is five stories, and then behind it is the apartment component, which is seven stories, that contains a rooftop pool and hangout area.
Yeah, so it has, it's a hotel and apartments, and the amenities, the pool area is used by both the hotel and apartment, the people that live in the apartment. So anyway, it was interesting, and it looks like a really good project, and we'll probably come to Planning Commission at some point.
Maybe.
Maybe. Did I say probably and maybe in the same sentence? I did, so, yeah, we're not sure. But anyway, it was a good meeting. Do you have anything you wanted to add?
It's the first project, I believe, that we've had where we've had combination of a hotel motel with apartment building. So that's going to be interesting and a welcome addition, I think, and it's something that, you know, will be definitely adding to the Uptown plan, and I hope it'll spur additional residential development as we go on, because that's the plan with Uptown, so...
And we looked over all the colors. We were good with them, so that was a good thing. And the, the style is, what is it called?
It's kind of like Venetian.
Venetian, so it's a little bit different, very different actually than the other two.
There's nothing else in Temecula, or, I don't know where, how far you'd have to go to find something like that.
It's different, but it's a good look, anyway.
Very good. Any other subcommittee reports? Now that all our audience is gone, I want to introduce our special VIP tonight, Councilman Stu Stewart. Are you spying on us? Welcome. It's good to see you here tonight. We don't often have a lot of visitors, and we appreciate it all the time. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, Community Development Director report, Stewart?
Director Watson did not relay anything to me to report, and I don't have anything either tonight.
Okay, Public Works Director, Ron.
So just a few items, I've already mentioned it to a couple of you, but as you all know, Yunes Road has quite a bit of congestion in the afternoons, peak hours, going from Santiago north, trying to get to the Duck Pond, trying to get to Rancho California Road to get out to the freeways, and, or to the rest of the community. So our traffic department has undertaken kind of a little study, analysis, and we think we can get another lane, or we know we can get another lane going northbound, and so what we're going to do is, in conjunction with a rehab project for Yunes, we're going to go ahead and restripe it, and we're going to move the lanes over so that we can get to northbound, and that way that will hopefully relieve a lot of the congestion. It'll have to still squeeze down at Rancho Vista, however, I think that section going from Santiago all the way up is going to be much, it's going to have a lot more relief. So we're going to be doing that restriping as soon as school ends, we'll start the rehab and start the restriping of Yunes. So it's a nice interim project before we do the bigger project of widening Rancho Vista someday.
So wait, Ron, on that, so four, it would go to four lanes, an extra lane on both sides, or just an extra lane on going north?
No, the southbound drops, yeah, so you only have the one lane southbound, but it's really the northbound that is the real problem.
Right.
Yeah.
Just restriping, that's not adding any addition?
No, no width, we do have to add a little asphalt, that's why we're going to do a grind and overlay, we're going to do a slurry seal. We don't like to do restriping and leave the old stripes, so we're going to get it all blown out of there and, you know, get that done. So that's happening this summer.
Is there a bike lane there right now?
We're going to add one in.
Okay, so add an additional lane and bike lane?
Yeah, we're going to have a buffer, so we're going to have a, we're going to have it protected, yeah. So we've got the width, but we need to make some changes, so. So that's happening this summer. The two new signals that are coming online at Heirloom Farms, which was right near this project you just approved, that's probably a month out, they're trying to get that done in June, so they want to get that done before the July 4 holiday, so we're hoping it's operational. That's tied to the first building permit, as you know. And then our Wabash signal, same thing. We've been waiting on Edison on both signals, so they just dropped the meters, or the point of connection yesterday, they get the meters tomorrow, so we're hoping that Wabash signal at the Park and Ride is complete by the end of the month as well. So that's what the goal is for both signals, by the July 4 weekend. So that's what the goal is for both signals by the July 4th weekend. And then lastly, in case you do get questioned, because I know you guys get questioned on certain things, next week you may see some night work going on on Rancho Cal, Winchester, Temecula Parkway. We're replacing the traffic controllers. We need to upgrade to a new, more modern controller cabinet, and so we're going to be having our contractors out there swapping those out, our inspectors will be out. So it's night work, so it should be minimal impacts on the traffic control, but in case you do get questioned, it'll be the nights of the 8th and 9th. So that'll be happening. But we swapping out traffic controllers, minimal interruption to the traffic. It's a quick swap, but we got to go to multiple locations. There's a bunch of them being swapped out. And that's it for tonight.
Great, thank you very much for the report. Just one real quick before we adjourn. I had the good fortune to attend the opening of the trail here in Old Town, and Commissioner Hegel and Turley Trejo were also there, as well as other commissioners and some of the city council members and the public in general. And the new bike trail slash walking trail is all along the Myriad Creek, and it's really nice, if you haven't seen it, to go out and take a look at it. It's going to be a really nice addition, especially as the riparian stuff grows up in the creek, it should add a lot more variety to the scene and that type of thing, but it's a great family addition to the city, and it was good to see everybody up to attend that, so.
Anybody wants to walk it Friday morning at 7:00? I'll be there, so.
Maybe I'll see you. Okay, with that, that concludes our agenda tonight, and I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting until our next regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, June 15th, 2022, at 6:00, right here in City Council Chambers. We stand adjourned.